I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could everyone please stand for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'd like to welcome everybody to our school board reorganization meeting. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Lisa Marcellus and Ms. Mara Rushlander and the children's choir who will perform for us this evening.
Hello, my name is Mara Rushlander and this is Ms. Marcellus. I teach at Rossell Elementary and she teaches at Westfield Elementary. This is the North Hill Children's Choir. We're comprised of students in grades four through six from all four elementary schools. Our first song tonight is going to be titled "Run, Run, Run."
Where's Rudolph? Where's Rudolph? Rudolph, the red-nosed reindeer. Where's Rudolph? Where's Rudolph? Better hurry up than find him. A Santa is ready to go. Go find Rudolph, where in the world can he be? Go find Rudolph, here it is a quarter past three. Rudolph's gotta be found. He better not be messing around. Go find Rudolph, Santa's gonna make it to town. Look in every corner. Look behind every tree. Look up and down and all around and tell me what you see. Go find Rudolph, where in the world can he be? Go find Rudolph, here it is a quarter past three. Rudolph's gotta be found. He better not be messing around. Go find Rudolph, Santa's gonna make it to town. Rudolph's gotta be found. He better not be messing around. Go find Rudolph, Santa's gonna make it to town. Well, we found our friend Rudolph. And what do you know? He was way out yonder around the North Pole. Playing in the snow. Run, Rudolph, run, 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 run. Run, my Rudolph, why don't you hurry me so? Rudolph, the flash of light. His nose is burning bright. My, my Rudolph. Run, my Rudolph. My, my Rudolph, Santa's gonna make it to town.
We're so excited to be here for the beginning to kind of kick off your winter season here. The next song we'd like to sing is "Little Star." And we're accompanied this evening by High School Mira Schwantrin as well.
Little star up in the sky. Shining brightly from on high. Leading to a tiny child. Little star up in the sky. Venite, venite. Adore us, don't we know? Venite, venite. Adore us, don't we know? Little star up in the sky. Shining brightly from the sky. Shining brightly from the sky. Leading to a tiny child. Little star up in the sky. Venite, venite. Adore us, don't we know? Venite, venite. Adore us, don't we know? Adore us, don't we know? Little star. Little star.
Thank you so much. We have our concert next Monday at 7:00. The Westfield Auditorium if you'd like what you heard today. Ms. Marcellus, would you ask the students to please say their names and what school they're from?
My name is Daniela Born. I go to Rossell Elementary.
My name is Alina Becher. I go to Rossell Elementary.
My name is Sharon Manon.
My name is Helen McHale.
My school is Rossell.
My name is Peyton Stale and I go to SPO Elementary.
My name is Julia Combon and I go to Rossell Elementary.
My name is Kate Haggie and I go to High School Elementary.
My name is Julia O'Conner and I go to Westfield Elementary.
My name is Julia O'Conner.
My name is Madeline Tron and I go to Westfield Elementary.
My name is Bosu Dessa. I'm going to go with Maggie's Fire.
My name is Bosu Rashford.
My name is Emily Tissman and I go to High School.
My name is Bella O'Conner and I go to Westfield Elementary.
My name is Jennifer Luskey and I go to Westfield Elementary.
My name is Natalie and I go to January Ole and I go to Westminster Elementary.
My name is Jayne McLeod and I go to Westfield Elementary.
No, my name is Melissa.
My name is Natalie.
My name is Evan Paul and I go to Rossell Elementary.
My name is Susan Nunez and I go to Rossell Elementary.
My name is Parker Powell and I go to Rossell Elementary.
My name is Emily Grayson and I go to Westfield Elementary.
My name is Tess Benin and I go to Westfield Elementary.
My name is Russell.
My name is Melissa.
My name is Natalie and I go to Westfield.
My name is Shawna Alnasky and I go to Westfield Elementary.
My name is Isabel Morrison and I go to Rossell Elementary.
My name is Hannah Morris and I go to Rossell Elementary.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Richard O'Biella, who would minister the oath of office to our newly elected school board members. Judge O'Biella?
So I've got a long speech for you all on what it means to be a good public servant. And I was going to go to all sorts of core values. When I walked in tonight, I was fortunate enough to be blessed to see Jim Bender. I don't know if Jim is still here, but Arlene epitomized the positive care first position. So I'd like to take just a quick moment of silence and remember Arlene and all that she has done for us. So your challenge going forward is to character positive attitude or character more bills. Because she really did epitomize what the big credit is going to. A call to the floor for swearing in. Helen D. Spade.
I, Helen D. Spade. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support obeying the law. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And that I would discharge the duties. And I would discharge the duties. Of school director. Of school director. With my oath.
Call to the floor by alphabetical order. Phil.
Dude, you gotta go see it.
They're so cute.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, my gosh. They're so cute.
I, Philip Little. I, Philip Little. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support obeying the law. That I will support obeying the law. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And I would discharge the duties. North Hill School District Director. With my oath.
So second kids, man.
Deanna?
Yeah.
Judge O'Biella. I, Deanna Phil. Do solemnly swear. That I will support obeying the law. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And I would discharge my duties. And I would discharge my duties. Of school director. With my oath. I, Captain Tony Thompson. I, Captain Tony Thompson. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support obeying the law. That I will support obeying the law. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And that I would discharge the duties. And that I would discharge the duties. Of school director. Of school director.
I, Rachel Renenbeck. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support obeying the law. That I will support obeying the law. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And I would discharge the duties. Of North Hill School Director. With my oath. Thank you. Thank you, Judge O'Biella.
Everybody have a great holiday.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, I will accept nominations for temporary chairperson. I'd like to nominate Dr. Knowlish. Second? Are there any other nominations? All right. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Dr. Knowlish will be temporary chairperson. If everybody's listening, I don't think I need to use the gavel. So I will now accept nominations for president of the North Hill School District Board of Education from December 2019 through December 2020.
I would like to nominate Allison Mathis for school board president. You know, I asked my kids what they would say about Ally and why I should support her for president. My younger child said it's because she works hard for the kids. My older child says she makes sure that everyone has a voice. And, you know, thinking about it, that's absolutely why I think Ally would be a great school board president. She works really hard for the kids. If you tell her about something, she goes. And she makes sure everyone has a voice. She listens to everybody all the time, no matter what. I think Ally is a great leader. I think she'd be a great president. And that is why I am nominating her.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozera. And I will go ahead and second that nomination for Mrs. Mathis. Are there any other nominations?
No, but I'd like, can I say something here now before we vote?
Certainly.
Okay. I didn't want to be out of order. I don't want to go on, but I think Ally's a very nice person. It has nothing to do with Ally. I need to abstain from this vote. I think this board is becoming too political. And we can't have that moving forward. I'm not used to it. We haven't had it in years. And I hope that they're able to bring it together here and work as one unit. So therefore, I need to abstain.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay. Allison Mathis has been nominated to serve as president of the North Hill School District Board of Education from December 2019 to December 2020. All in favor? Aye. Any want to post? All in favor, with the exception of Mrs. Ray, who is abstaining?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to just make a very brief comment, if that's okay. I won't go on for too long. But I'd first like to thank Ms. Kozera and her children for nominating me and for their kind words. And to my colleagues, both new and old on the board, for entrusting me with this great honor and this position. I have always tried to keep the best interest of the students and the community at the forefront of my mind in my time on the school board. And I plan to continue doing so as board president. We live in an amazing school district and a wonderful community. And I am proud and prepared to help lead. Thank you. That being said, I will now accept nominations for vice president of the North Hills School District Board of Education from December 2019 to December 2020.
I nominate Helen Spade.
I'll second Mrs. Spade. Any other nominations or discussion? Helen D. Spade has been nominated to serve as vice president of the North Hills School District Board of Education from December 2019 to December 2020. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Spade. I will now accept a motion to reappoint Michael J. Witherall Esquire as solicitor of the North Hills School District for 2020. The fees are established, just one moment, at $7.50 per month retainer and $120 per hour as they were in the previous year.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
Now, could I say something at this point? I would just like to say that Mr. Witherall has been here for a long time. I'm not going to say how long. And he has represented our school district in the best way possible. He is truly a North Hills person. And he does a fantastic job. And I'd like to thank him for that. And plus, he does it at a reasonable rate.
Yes.
He's low bidder.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Witherall. I will now accept a motion to adopt resolution number 2019-15 appointing Michael J. Witherall Esquire as collector of delinquent school district real estate taxes as per the attached document.
I'll motion for that.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Good luck.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I will now accept nominations to appoint two members to serve as representatives on the Northern Area Special Purpose Schools Board for 2020. The entire board will serve as alternates.
I would like to nominate Rachel Renenbeck.
Is there a second? Yes.
I'd second that motion.
Any other nominations?
Can I nominate Helen D. Spade? Or do you want to do it? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, I was going to nominate Helen D. Spade.
Yeah. I'll second. Thank you.
Any other nominations? Okay. Rachel Renenbeck and Helen D. Spade have been nominated. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Renenbeck and Mrs. Spade. I will now accept nominations for a member to serve as the legislative chairperson for 2020. I'd like to nominate Mrs. Kozera. Can I second it?
Sure.
I'll second that. Are there any other nominations? Legislative chairperson?
Sandy. That's special.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Kozera.
Thank you.
I will accept a motion to appoint Gerard F. Muth as treasurer effective January 2nd, 2020. So moved.
I'll second. Second.
Any discussion? I just asked if there was any discussion.
Oh.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I will now accept a motion to designate the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette as the official newspaper for legal notices for 2020.
I'll motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. I will accept a motion to adopt resolution number 2019-16 authorizing the filing of the appropriate affidavit with the Secretary of the Commonwealth in accordance with the Uniform Facsimile Signature Act of 1961 as per the attached document.
I'll motion.
Second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I will accept a motion to establish school board meeting dates for 2020 as per the attached document.
I'll motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. I would now like to adjourn the meeting. And the combined work session and legislative meeting will follow after a short recess. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with a public recognition this evening. And I will hand it over to Dr. Manarino.
Okay, so every year, and this has been a tradition in this district for probably about 15 years, is that we have a student contest to do our annual holiday card. And this year's winner is Han Zhang. And I think she's here with us tonight, correct? Hanlin, come on up here. I've got a couple people that are, Mr. Simon is our art teacher. Mr. McCarron is our high school principal. But I just want to kind of talk about the contest. And then we've got a few gifts for you that we can share with you and with everybody else. And Mr. Simon, I think Mr. McCarron want to say a couple of things about you. I want you to know right now, this is her artwork. This artwork jumped off the table for me. We had hundreds of people apply K through 12 for this art contest. And there was just something about this that struck me. And I really, really liked this artwork. And I felt that this was our holiday card. And so we went with this one this year. But if you follow us on social media, I know that Heather is going to share a bunch of the other cards that we thought were very good that just didn't match up to this type of artwork that we saw this year. And so what we've done for you, we have a small gift for you. And that is we had your artwork framed so that you can have this to be displayed wherever you would like that to be displayed. I want you to know that this card is sent to about 1,000 people. And so all over Allegheny County, and Mr. Akins here tonight, he will get a copy of your card with my signature on it because he is the superintendent at Schaler. But we send these to superintendents all over the area. Anybody that's really affiliated with the North Hill School District will get your artwork as representation of the North Hill School District welcoming for the holidays. What we've done for you is we got you a small gift card. And we gave you 100 copies? 50? And so you have a set of cards in here for you as well. But your artwork was beautiful. And we really appreciate you doing that for us. And like I said, I know that, Mr. Simon, Mr. McCarron may want to say some things about you. And then I know that all the board members would like to congratulate you this evening. Matt?
Thank you, Dr. Manarino. Thank you, everybody, just for giving us the opportunity. As he had mentioned, this is a fun contest that we do every year. Of course, it's district-wide. So any student that submits an artwork is entered and can win. And, you know, I was just fortunate enough to have Hanlin in my class to create this artwork. So just very, very proud of her. She's a wonderful student. You know, I've had her for a couple of years now. Just love having her in class. And I know all my students look forward to the contest. So just again, very proud of her for the work that she did and just everything she does in my class. So Hanlin, again, congratulations.
I want to say that while I'm new in this position at North Hills, I'm not new to this art contest. I'm married to a former art teacher and my three kids submit every year. And so at dinner tonight, before we came out to the meeting, I had to break the news to them that they didn't win. So at dinner tonight, we brought up the picture that was posted on Facebook of your holiday work and the card. And they all agreed that it was worthy of winning. Great job. Thank you so much. Congrats.
Congratulations. That was beautiful. Did you do that all freelance? I can't do a straight line. Congratulations. It was beautiful.
Congratulations.
Congrats. It's awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Beautiful job. Congratulations.
There's a couple of things.
Oh, okay.
It's okay. I'll be right back.
Okay, I'll now move on to board member comments. Are there any board members who have any comments? Are there any board members who have any comments they'd like to share on anything this evening?
Um, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I, um, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that there is no school on January 10th, um, which is a Friday. Um, it's teacher in service for the end of the first semester, is that correct, Dr. Manarino? Um, as somebody who works and needs to plan in advance, um, I, you know, since that's sort of a non-standard day to be off, I thought it might make sense to mention that. Um, of course, we have our winter break in between now and then, but, um, that is, it comes very quickly following winter break, so, um, everyone should be aware of, of that for planning purposes.
Good reminder. Any other comments? Has anybody signed up for any public comments on agenda items only? Okay. So next we'll move on to approving the minutes from November 7th, uh, 2019, that from the work session legislative meeting, uh, the minutes have been attached to the agenda and distributed in advance.
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next up, we have the Points of Pride presentation, uh, with Dr. Manarino.
Okay, so we're doing a much better job of coordinating this, so we don't duplicate efforts. So I'm going to turn this over to Hannah. She's going to go over all of the great things that have happened at our high school since our last meeting, and then she's going to turn it back over to me to talk about all the great things that have happened in our elementary schools. But one of the things that has really struck me about the North Hill School District, and I've been here since 2002, but every year it amazes me about the spirit of giving. At the time of Thanksgiving and at the time of, of Christmas holiday coming up, our families are so generous in the amount of donations that are given, whether it's food or monetary donations or things that can help around the household. We have tremendous people in this community that are helping through the Backpack Organization, through the elves foundation. And so it's just, it really touches me every year whenever I see how much money and how many products are donated to those that are less fortunate than we are. And so I'm going to turn it over to our elementary students at that point to talk about the spirit of giving, and that's why they're here. Because these children do amazing work in our schools and it really shows who we are as a North Hills community and what we're willing to do to give to those who are less fortunate than us. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Hannah, talk about the great things at the high school.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hannah Shulley. I'm an 11th grader for everyone new here, and I usually have another student with me, but she couldn't make it tonight. She's Ellie, but she's not here. So I'll start with, um, so me and Ellie were actually the moderators for the Connor Lamb Town Hall. So it was an interactive digital town hall with students from across Pittsburgh. And Representative Lamb took questions from the students in their room about every, like, current legislation events and as well as his role in Washington. And I know Ellie and I had a lot of fun, like moderating the event. We really liked this. And it was really cool that he came and I really liked this. Um, so then the holiday, Pittsburgh Holiday Parade, our marching band opened this year's, um, Holiday Parade last Saturday with their pre-game song, "Renegade," which was pretty cool. And then, um, the Ford Driving Skills for Life, the juniors participated in a safe driving assembly addressing the leading causes of teen death hosted by KDKA, and the event's sponsors included Ford, the Governor's Highway Safety Association, and the Allegheny Pre-Trial Services. So some of the students' athletes' letters of intent, so we have Isabella Garell, she's going to swim for Clarion University, Sam Hillegas is going to wrestle for Virginia Tech, Elena Longjohn will play soccer for William &amp; Mary, and Maddie Martin will play volleyball at Pittsburgh Greenberg, which is pretty cool for everyone. So the Sportsmanship Summit, some of the students' athletes attended the Whipple's Annual Sportsmanship Summit at the Heinz History Center. Um, the event focused on sportsmanship in today's society and reinforces the importance of appropriate behavior among student athletes. I know a couple of my friends went to this and they said they really liked it and they had a lot of fun. So the AS, AFS International Dinner was to bring different cultures showcased through a variety of dishes and student performances to show our multicultural roots, roots as Americans and the very fabric that binds us together despite the different cultural cultures and traditions. Me and Ellie were both at this too, and we had a lot of fun. Like the food was really good and the performances were really impressive. Like I didn't know some of these kids could do that and it was a lot of fun. A lot of people came, it was, it was a good event. So the Environmental Club added labels to recycling bins at the high schools. I was part of the Environmental Club to make these. So there was a lot of people putting like trash in the recycling bins, so the janitors would just throw it all away because they couldn't like, weren't going to pick through it every day, every night. So then we, we made these lids so the janitors could take them off easily, easily, and just to put paper and bottles so nobody would end up putting trash in the recycling bins. And so the North Hills Brew Crew, every Friday morning, the Brew Crew walks the halls of the high school delivering coffee to the staff members. And last month they got new uniforms. And thank you to Matt Simon for designing their cool logo. So the Children's Grief Awareness Day was on November 21st, and more than $800 was, was raised for High Marks, the Caring Place for Children's Grief Awareness Day. And the Pittsburgh Veterans Day Parade, the marching band took part in the 100th Annual Veterans Day Parade, and some Westview students were there to show their support, and the North Hills Band also played in it. So the Thanksgiving Food Drive was with the National Honor Society and they packed, they organized for the Thanksgiving Food Drive and nearly 200 bags were filled with groceries to be distributed to North Hills families in need for the holidays with the Backpack Initiative. Thanks for everyone who donated. So the Winter Pep Rally is all the new winter sports teams to kick off the season. There's basketball, swimming and diving, wrestling, bowling, and ice hockey, and cheerleading. And the class officers are hosting the Dinner with Santa on Wednesday, December 4th, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the high school cafeteria. And the news, the spring musical was announced and it's Catch Me If You Can, and it's showing March 20th through the 22nd and March 26th through the 28th. And finally, the National Honor Society is hosting a blood drive on December 13th at the North Hills High School from 7:30 to 1:00 in the wrestling room.
And I had the opportunity to, um, tour the high school with Senator Lindsey Williams. Um, in that tour, uh, we showed off the unique class offerings that help students better prepare for life after North Hills. Uh, this was an amazing week last week whenever we dedicated the old gym, uh, to Woody Woodburn. That dedication now bears Woody's name and also Woody affectionately named this place the dungeon. And so you can see in the top picture, it says the dungeon now prominently placed on the wall. So Woody was a teacher in the district for over 40 years, was a boys and girls basketball coach for about 35 years, and I couldn't find a more fitting tribute to Woody than to name that gym after him. So that was last Monday. It was a really awesome night for us here in the North Hill School District because following the Woody Woodburn presentation was the Winter Pep Rally. So it was a pretty neat night here. I'd like to welcome Alexa Vukela. Alexa is our newest North Hills School District Police Officer. Alexa comes to us from Chatham University Police Force, and so I'd like to welcome her to North Hills. North Hills celebrated World Kindness Day wearing cardigans, and you can see students across the district wore cardigans on World Kindness Day in honor of Pittsburgh's own Mr. Rogers. And I liked how some of our, our schools changed the theme a little bit, so in World Kindness Day, Be the Eye and Kind was McIntyre's theme, and you can see how the students, uh, wear the eye and kind on the World Kindness Day on a wall that they had in their school. We also celebrated Veterans Day in many of our schools, and so at McIntyre, we constructed a wall up for Veterans Day, and each of those stars represents veterans who are close to our students or our staff members. And our first graders made cards to send to veterans at the Southwest Veterans Center. Also on that day, our seventh grade students hosted a Veterans Day Roundtable, interviewing veterans in attendance about their military experiences and the ways that they served our country. Also during this time, McIntyre first and sixth graders made turkey centerpieces out of tissue boxes and placements for the Pennsylvania's Southwest Veterans Center. North Hills Middle School Service Club members organized a school-wide Thanksgiving Food Drive where students donated an impressive 1,163 food items that helped feed over 11 local families for the holidays. And our middle school students visited the North Hills Food Bank last month where they helped package and sort food for those who are in need. Westview Elementary hosted a Rainbow for Riley Day, and our student councils, and this was completely organized by our students, which is the most impressive thing here, is that our students organized a Funky Friday event, and during this, they raised $500 for our sixth grader, Riley Balsita, who Riley is recovering from bone marrow transplant that he had last summer in his fight against leukemia. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our elementary students to talk about the spirit of giving that's occurring in our elementary schools.
Hi, I'm Maggie West, and I'm the sixth grade president at High Cliff Elementary.
Hi, my name is Cameron Gerst. I'm the fifth grade student council president. This year we are celebrating the season of giving by having Teacher May I Week. During this week, the students will give a donation to participate in a fun activity such as Crazy Hair Day, Pajama Day, Hat Day, Play a Board Game Day, and more. We will be donating half the money that is raised to Smile Train. Smile Train is an organization that helps children who have collect lips.
The other half of the donation is going to go to the Humane Society. This donation will help to provide a safe place for thousands of homeless, injured, and abused animals each year. During December, we are also making cards for Meals on Wheels as well as a local nursing home. Students at High Cliff will also be celebrating kindness by leaving their friends encouraging post-it notes throughout the school year.
Good evening, North Hills School Board. My name is Grace Aiken. The words of Aesop, "No act of kindness, however small, is ever wasted," range true to what many people believe during the holidays. The season of giving always reminds me of the time my family gave out food to homeless people on Thanksgiving Day. I was heartbroken for the people as we handed out the food, but hopeful because I was making their Thanksgiving better. The season of giving isn't just to give. It makes a difference in our community. If we have the eyes to see what needs to be changed, the ears to listen to people's cries, and a heart that helps and gives, we can make a difference. It only takes one person to believe our community can change for the better and step out to make that change. My dad shared a story with me about all these starfish that washed up on the shore in Mexico, and an old man started tossing them in the water. A young guy came and asked him why it made a difference since there were thousands of starfish. He replied, "I made a difference to that one." If we can find that one person who is hurting and do a small act of kindness, they could pass it on to more people, which changes everybody around us. The gift of giving helps us as a person become more caring and compassionate people and gives us more connections and builds bridges. It also helps others by making a difference in their lives and changes how they see. Chain reactions of giving don't happen unless you are willing to step out and believe you can change others by giving the gift of giving.
Ms. Brennan Seebek and I am running, and I am the fifth grade student council treasurer from McIntyre. This year during the spirit of giving, we will be raising money for Make-A-Wish. Make-A-Wish grants a wish for kids who have an illness. Instead of being in the hospital, the kids can spend quality time with their families in a fun place. McIntyre Elementary School will be having a Spirit Week in this December during, during we will ask for a dollar donations participating in fun activities like White Out Day and Ugly Sweater Day. It is important to raise money as a community because it shows we are kind and giving. Some kids aren't as fortunate as us, so giving them may make them feel more included.
Good evening. My name is Dante Obeniz. I'm the sixth grade student council president at Ross Elementary.
Hi, my name is Brady Rowley, and I am the fifth grade student council president at Ross Elementary. Ross Elementary has focused our fundraising this fall on three separate groups.
We began our fundraising efforts on October 1st with our third annual JDRF Kids Walk to Cure Diabetes. The fifth and sixth graders served as chaperones for grades K through 4, as the entire school walked around the Ross Elementary School and tracked for 45 minutes. As a school, we raised $1,275 to help fight childhood diabetes.
Two weeks later, we held our fourth annual Pumpkin March of Dimes Time Collection. Each grade filled plastic pumpkin containers with dimes to support the March of Dimes. The second grade was the winning grade. As a school, we collected $1,600 in dimes.
As we get into the holiday season, Ross Elementary is currently raising money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation once again. We kicked off the Thanksgiving holiday with our 20th Annual Paper Turkey Decorating Contest. Over 250 students participated in the fundraiser. The paper turkeys were displayed in the front hallway of the school for over two weeks. Students paid $1 to be in the contest, and they were able to vote for their favorite turkeys. Each year, the winning turkey owner receives a gift card. In a few weeks, we will also have our Paper Snowman Contest as we get closer to the winter break.
Our most profitable holiday fundraiser each year is Teacher May I Week, which will be held from December 9th to the 13th. Each classroom teacher comes up with different ideas, such as Hat Day or Pajama Day, to raise money for Make-A-Wish. Students pay a small amount to participate in the, the daily activities. Over the years, Teacher May I Week alone has raised $3,000, $3,500.
We will conclude our fundraising at Ross Elementary on Thursday, December 19th, with our Second Annual Holiday Sweater Jacket Fest Sweatshirt Contest. For $1, students are encouraged to wear their favorite holiday outfit. A panel of staff members brings all the participants together at the end of the day and rewards the best outfits with gift cards. All proceeds from the contest benefit the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
Hi, my name is Jack Bulkey, and I am the sixth grade student council president at Westview Elementary.
My name is Leah Loney, and I'm the fifth grade student council president at Westview Elementary.
Hi, my name is Jack Bulkey, and I'm the sixth student council president at Westview Elementary. A few years ago, a classmate of mine was diagnosed with leukemia. Our Westview family held fundraisers for his family to help him. This past summer, the same classmate had a bone marrow transplant. To show we still care, our student council had, held, held a Funky Friday event last month. Each grade was assigned a color in the rainbow, and each student that wanted to participate donated $1 and wore the color assigned to their grade. We called it the Rainbow for Riley and raised $614 for our classmate. The spirit of giving is easy and something we all have. If you work together to help someone else, it is easy to be a rainbow in someone else's cloud. I am proud to say the spirit of giving is alive and well at Westview Elementary.
When I think about the spirit of giving, I think that is definitely a feeling that we have at Westview. At Westview, the students want to give and make other people's lives a little bit better than they are. Right now, we are holding our annual food drive at Westview. Each classroom collects canned goods and non-perishable food items for people in need in our community. The food is delivered to the people in our community right before Christmas, with the hope that it makes life a little bit easier and nicer. At Westview, we hope that these acts of kindness make people feel better. Who knows? Maybe it will make someone feel like they want to help someone else because they know how good it feels to be helped. We are trying to make our community a better place and create a chain reaction of giving.
Good evening. My name is Catherine McGoy, and I am currently an eighth grader at the North Hills Middle School. I have been given the privilege to state the past, current, and known future charity events of the middle school. Kids Helping Kids Coin War. Middle School Service Club students kicked off the year with a school-wide fundraiser at the beginning of October called Kids Helping Kids. This is our third year organizing the fundraiser, which serves a different organization each year. This year, through a friendly home run competition, we were able to raise an impressive $869.35. Service Club will be purchasing items to put together welcome snack and busy bags for patients and families who are currently staying in the Pittsburgh Ronald McDonald's house. Love Like the Boys Random Acts of Kindness Cards. In honor of the Tree of Life Community, Service Club members distributed Love Like the Boys cards that were paired with a random act of kindness that they performed. Thanksgiving Food Drive, as mentioned, Middle School Service Club organized and sponsored a Thanksgiving Food Drive. As a school, we donated 1,163 food items that were used to make up 11 complete Thanksgiving meals for local families. In addition to the food drive items, each family was also given a turkey, cooking pan, pumpkin pie, and rolls. Turkey Trot. The North Hills Middle School Gym Teachers, Mr. Rigard and Ms. Kresik, as well as health teacher, Mr. Jervanik, hosted the Turkey Trot fundraiser and activity supporting the Backpack Initiative. The fundraiser raised a little over $1,000, which will be, which will enable the North Hills Middle School to provide free meals to students as needed. The North Hill School District, sorry. Finsechin, her, Finsechin Nursing Home Holiday Party. Middle School Service Club members will be hosting our annual holiday party for the residents of Finsechin Nursing Home on Thursday, December 12th. Students will be making a craft with each resident, playing bingo, enjoying cookies and punch, and singing Christmas carols. Students will be making a craft with each resident, playing bingo, enjoying cookies and punch, and singing Christmas carols. Prior to our party, we will be preparing a gift basket to give each resident that will include necessities such as cards, stamps, lotion, socks, and more. Reflections of Grace Valentines. Service Club members will be organizing a Valentine's sale during all lunches. Valentines will include a piece of candy and will be delivered to students' homerooms. Proceeds for the sale will be donated to the Reflections of Grace Foundation that benefits children and families affected by pediatric brain cancer. Peer Buddy Field Trip. The Middle School Service Club will be joining students from the Life Skills Classroom and Autistic Support Classroom on a Peer Buddy Field Trip in February or March. This year's location is still being decided on by club members. In past years, the field trip took place at Ross Park Mall where each club member and buddy was given a mall gift card and had to budget their lunch, purchase some items of their choice, and perform a scavenger hunt to find necessity items. Last year, the buddies visited the aviary and learned about penguins and their habitats. They even got an up-close encounter with a penguin. Finsechin Nursing Home Prom. In May, the Middle School Service Club hosts a senior prom at Finsechin Nursing Home. The residents are able to visit the photo booth upon arrival and are given a flower corsage. The residents are served snacks and treats by club members and play bingo. A king and queen of the prom are crowned, and the students dance to Oldies with the Residents. We are very excited about these various opportunities to serve others in our schools and in our communities. It's a privilege to help others. Thank you for supporting our efforts.
Hello, everyone. My name is Wendy Huhn, and I'm a senior here at the North Hills High School. I belong to various clubs here at North Hills, including A F S, American Field Service, Stand Together, and I'm on the Board of Student Council and Hands for Service. Here at the North Hills High School, we do a variety of different charitable events and donations throughout the holidays. Some of the great things we do include the following. German Club. They host Tired for Tots every year and donates all the proceeds to charities. This will be the seventeenth year that they host Tired for Tots, and so far, they have raised ninety thousand dollars. Spanish Club. They are selling bracelets with conjunction with the Pulsera Project, which is a charity in Nicaragua and Guatemala. All the proceeds go to the artisans who make the bracelets. National Honor Society and our class officers joined together and collected food for Thanksgiving families in the North Hills community, and the dinners included turkey and all the things listed, as Emily did. Our counselors during Grief Awareness Day raised eight hundred dollars as seen in the Pride, the Points of Pride. The N H marching band collected toys and donated everything to Toys for Tots. The N H singers are singing at two churches along with the N H S D retiree luncheon. And the N H chorus will also be hosting its magical dinner this Friday night. Student Council and Hands for Service team up every year and have already started to raise money that will be donated to Children's Hospital and Make-A-Wish. They already hosted the trunk or treat and volleyball tournament this year. This month, they will be taking students to the Children's Hospital and Make-A-Wish facilities to spread the holiday joy. They also had the high school write holiday letters to veterans and troops overseas, and will do an N H district-wide Letters to Santa to be delivered to Macy's mailbox. And Macy's will match every letter with one dollar. The senior class officers and activities will be hosting the First Dinner with Santa tomorrow night. This will also help with Letters with Santa in conjunction with Macy's. Student Council, Hands for Service, class officers, and cheerleaders all go to the N H Health and Rehab Center and play bingo or help the senior citizens with anything they request. The band, chorus, and N H students will be helping N H Cares this Saturday at the Northway Block. The French National Honor Society are baking cookies and sending them to army bases. And finally, the Sewing Club makes treat bags that include hand warmers for police officers, and they make dresses for children in Africa. We all try to help people and raise money for different charities all year long. And on behalf of the high school student body, I wanted to say thank you and have a happy holiday.
Very nice. I wanted to make that an important part of our Points of Pride tonight because, as I said, our students and our staff do a tremendous job of looking out for those that are less fortunate to make sure that they could have a happy holiday as well. And that's why I wanted to make sure that you could hear that from their mouths. So they do the work. I think they deserve the credit, so if we could just give them a round of applause. The board would like to see you. They have a nice gift for you for coming out tonight and presenting. So if you could just go around, shake their hands.
I think I'm next.
You are next. I just wanted to say briefly that we'll be doing the committee assignments after this meeting. So at the next meeting, all the board members will have a committee assignment. But for now, we're going to just let the incumbent board members do their committees. And first up is education and a presentation on the Flexible Instruction Day Program.
Okay, so I think you're aware that we were approved for the Flexible Instructional Day Program. When we received our application, there were some things that the state required us to modify, some suggestions. So I'd like to just give everybody a brief overview of where we are at this point. At this point, you know, we're still, we're working on what that Flexible Instructional Day is going to look like, so it's basically under construction. So what I kind of want to say out of the gate here is that we will not be prepared to offer a Flexible Instructional Day before January thirteenth. So January thirteenth is the first day of the second semester. And so in the event of us getting weather that would require us to cancel school between now and the first day of the second semester, we are just going to have to make that day up as we have in our calendar. So we'll communicate that out in appropriate manner. But I feel pretty confident that we're going to be ready to go for the second semester, and I'm going to go over the things that we have right now. Where we are at this point, I'm going to talk about how you log in up for that day, what it looks like to say that you're in attendance or not in attendance, and all those things that the state required us to do. So before we go any further, we have decided to go with K-four lessons that are going to be basically sent home in this red bag. Okay, so every student K-four is going to get the entire Flexible Instructional Day Program in these red bags. And so look for those around the week of January sixth, once we come back. So that's the last week of the second semester. And so between now and that date, we're going to be preparing these bags. And I'm going to share a little bit more of what's in these bags here in a few minutes. But just so you know, that these bags are coming home K-four. This is not the only way that you access Flexible Instructional Days for K-four families. But this is your go-to in the event that you don't have internet connection. You've got multiple students that need access to a computer or whatever it may be. All of the lessons are in here. You can also access them all online in case you, like I've always said, put this bag under your microwave, because that's where it would end up in my house, and then no one would be able to find it on that day. You'll be able to access that information online, and I'm going to show you where you would get that information. So just so you know, real basics here with the Flexible Instructional Day Program. The state approved us to have up to five Flexible Instructional Days. Now, that does not mean if we call off school that we are using a Flexible Instructional Day. You will be notified of those days just as you are with any other school cancellation. So if you get a message that school is canceled and we will be making that day up, that is not a Flexible Instructional Day. If you get notified that school is canceled and we are offering a Flexible Instructional Day, that is your prompt to go through the login process that I'm about to share with you to let us know that you are participating. You will also be notified. W T A E, K D K A, W P X I have all changed their codes to identify whether it is a Flexible Instructional Day or just a school cancellation. So you'll also be notified by the media. Again, the same systems we've always used. Text message, phone call, email, all of those things are also going to indicate whether it's a Flexible Instructional Day or a day that's canceled to be made up at a future date. Okay, so that's kind of how the communication piece is going to happen, which really doesn't change all that much than the way we currently do it. Attendance is an important feature, and it's the one thing that the state of Pennsylvania wanted to make sure that we had a clear and distinct process for attendance. This is a school day. We're choosing to do it digitally, so that's an important part. So you have to, as a parent or a student, have to declare that I am in attendance today. If you are not in attendance, you will be required to make up the work that's provided on that day, just as you would if you were absent from school that day. So you will have to make arrangements with your teachers to get the materials and get that made up in a timely fashion, just as if you were absent from school that day. It is a school day. Attendance is important on that day. And now, we've built in some provisions for, like I've kind of said, I have multiple children, all of them need the computer. Or all of them, you know, they're going to a friend's house or a grandma's house, or whatever childcare means that I've made available. And maybe that's not the best environment for them to be doing these Instructional Day activities. So we've built in a provision for those, and that's, those activities are being offered to you on that day. You will have up to a three-day window to complete those activities. The teachers will be available by email. They're pretty much on call. If you email them, they're required to get back to you in about thirty minutes. So if you're having some difficulties with an assignment or an activity, or older children on the computer wouldn't let the younger children log on, let your teachers know that. They will work with you. I think, and I'm not going to speak for the teachers, and I know we have some in the audience, but they're behind this project, and they're working hard to make these good quality Instructional Days for the kids. And I know from them is they're not looking for these to be wasted either. So it's really important that we declare whether we're in attendance or not in attendance. And then, I'm going to show you again, I keep referring to, I'm going to show you. I'm going to show you what it looks like to log in. And in the event that you're having difficulties with that, our twelve-month employees are here on those days. Just call the school and let them know, my child is going to be in attendance today. We will log them in as being in attendance. It'll be much easier to do it online or mobile phone. It has a mobile site. It's mobily accessible as well, so you don't have to be at a computer. You can do this with your phone, with a tablet that's connected to the internet to declare that, yes, my children are in attendance, and they're going to complete the work for this day. And if you're absent, you have to follow the same absent procedures. I need a note declaring why you were absent, and we're going to have sick children on those days. It's a possibility. And if your children are sick and too sick to do the work on that day, then we will follow the absence procedures like we would as if it was a day in attendance. So real quick with the elementary version of this, and then Hannah is actually going to show you the secondary version because they're going to use Google Classroom, which was much more live action than the documents that we have for the K-four group. But for the K-six group, you're going to be required to do English, Math, Science, Social Studies, the four major subjects that we have. And then the special areas, and the big thing here is that to not get confused that if we call Flexible Instructional Day one, that is not day one of the six-day cycle. So whatever day that is of the six-day cycle is whatever day that is being flexed. So if it happens to be day five, you will do Flexible Instructional Day one packet. And when you get to the specials, whatever special your child has for day five is the special area packet that you will do. So if there's music, if your child has music on that day, you will do the music packet that's in the Flexible Instructional Day section. And I'm going to show those to you here in a second. So as I said, all assignments are in a red bag. They are color-coded. So when you get the bag here on January sixth or slightly after that, there are directions on the front. It explains kind of the things that I've been talking about here. It gives you all the need to know how to, how to log in, what to do, what color am I using, because each day is color-coded. And so Flexible Instructional Day one is pink, and two is blue, and three is yellow, and four is green, and five is blue. And then these in the back, the salmon-colored, these are the specials. Okay, so you'll do on day one, the pink packet and the art special out of this packet if your child has art that day. So this is how the Flexible Instructional Day is set up in the bag. And then I'm going to show you that this is duplicated online, so you don't have to access this if you don't want to. It'll be helpful particularly for the K-four students that you can have this as a guide to work along with them, or you could use the website as the guide to work along with them, giving them these documents. But that's how this is set up. So fifth and sixth grade and seventh through twelve are going to use Google Classroom, okay? But the same thing applies for the special area classes. They will log into the Google Classroom of the special area class, the band, the orchestra. All of those assignments can be found online, so that's sort of how that day is going to be set up. So students will go through their schedules as normal, and they complete the assignments in each class using Google Classroom. And I'm going to turn it over to Hannah, and she's going to show you what that looks like for a high school student. Got it?
Okay, guys, so I'm back again. I'm going to show you like my own, like how I would check in if I was logging on for the FID day. So I'd go to like the North Hills website, and so I would click on this big like box that says, "I'm attending." And then I would just put in like my name. And then I would click the high school, and then an eleventh grade. And then I click this box to say that like I am present and I will do the work within like the three days. And then I just submit that, and then that's how the school would like get my attendance. And then if I wasn't able to do this, I could like call the school and tell them like I am here, so like I could, so they would know I was here. So then I would, yes. So then I could go. I could go to my Google Classroom here. So like all my classes, teachers like are on Google Classroom and have like their whole. So like these are on my classes. You can see like they're all on here. So I'll show you my English teacher because he's really active on Google Classroom, and he has a lot of his stuff on. So like if there was like to be a FID day like this week, he posts like the weekly, like what we're going to do each day of the week. So like if we were not going to be here tomorrow, we have like a literary term quiz, so we know, like I know exactly what I'm going to do. And so he has, and so also we have like an essay we're working on. So if I needed to like share that with him, I could. So like I could like turn it in on here, and I could like add what I needed to like turn in my work. And also, you could, you can have like comments on specific assignments, and so the private comments, so he would see them. He would get an alert, and then he could answer me back. And also on the Google Classroom, there's like, you can see like the teacher's name and stuff. And if you go to the people at the bottom here, you could email like him directly. Like I could open and email him if I have a specific question. And just as another example, my physics teacher, he has, he set up his Google Classroom like for the FID. Like he has like the FID lessons in here, like has already kind of like planned out, so, well, they were planned out. Well, okay, so he had them in here. Yeah, they were a placeholder, but he had like stuff written in, like we would like read these pages of the book, do like these problems, and then we could turn it in and write on Google Classroom, so he could see like that we did the work. And then also like the same thing, we could email him on here. So he has it like, depending on what we were doing, like when the FID day was like called, depend on what lesson we would do. So I could email him. depend on what lesson we would do. So I could email him right on Google Classroom or, and like in the email app. So a Google Classroom is really good for this kind of stuff because there's, there's a lot of ways to get in contact and the teachers can put in a lot of information there. Get the lesson out.
So our students and teachers, grades five through 12, have been working in Google Classroom. And so you can see this is their entire schedule with the teachers connected to that. And that's where we decided to go with this as the model for five through 12, rather than the paper Blizzard bag like we had once thought would be the best idea. So when we met with fifth and sixth grade teachers, they wanted to go to this format. The students have iPads in five through 11. So unfortunately, we're not there yet with 12th graders. But you can see that Hannah is working out of the mobile site. So when you log on mobily, you'll see what she showed you at the beginning with the big button says, "I'm here." And I'm going to show you what that'll look like when you log in to a computer to say that my children are here. Okay, so this is the Google Classroom format. Again, this is five through 12. If you have any questions about that, I'd suggest that you contact your teacher. If you have any questions or concerns about what those look like, again, start with your teacher and then we can kind of help you along the way from there. Okay? So you want to do? Chris, I'm going to need back on the other one. It'll take me an hour and a half. All right. All right, thanks. Okay, so this is the website version of what Hannah showed you, and it's the same, "I'm attending." And so you click this button, fill out the form, just as she showed you. That is no different. So I'm not going to, I don't have to show you that. But it has the directions right here. Well, I can't remember what color we have to use. I dropped the bag and they're out of order. This is the, this is the color order. They're down here. Again, this explains sort of everything that I've said tonight is all right here in that opening page. And so if you look over here, once you get to, once you log in, it's going to take you to the assignments. Right here. Okay, so once you log in, if you look right here, flexible instructional day one is what's active. And again, these are under construction. And so I'm just going to go to grade one, and it's going to show you here, these are the lesson activities. And again, this is the digital version of what's in that red bag that's going to go home. So this is an example of grade one ELA. It explains what they need to do to complete the lesson. It explains here what the, what the lesson is. And you can see if there's a website like this, since I'm online, it comes up as active. But if you're looking at the paper, you're going to maybe want to use the QR code. Because if you scan the QR code, it's going to take you to that video. So this is a lot of what a student's opening day would look like. This is not going to confuse them. This is what their day looks like when they begin an ELA lesson, is they go through these five steps. So they're going to already know and understand what they need to do when they go through here. On this activity, they have some sight word activities, and there's a YouTube clip for them to watch, and again, a QR code. And then what they're, they need to do with the sight words. Here's their writing activity in ELA, and then you can see at the bottom here, if you'd like to learn more about this topic, you can do these types of things. Students know and understand what RASD Kids are. They do a lot of assignments in RASD Kids, and it takes them to RASD Kids. And then if you're experiencing difficulties, it says here to email your teacher. Remember, this is also a workday for our teachers, and they are going to be active and online. Hannah had talked about in a Google Classroom, if you want to contact a teacher, you click the button, and they're alerted. They're notified immediately that a student had sent you an email. The same thing true is here, that if you're having difficulties, I encourage you to email your teacher. And they'll be able to work you either through it or work out any of the difficulties they have. And again, we've got a little bit of a window here, so don't panic. If your child is experiencing some difficulties or experiencing some frustrations, just email your teacher and move on. They're going to work with you. They're not going to say, "All too bad. You can't get it. It's a flexible instructional day. It's going to be a zero." That's not what's going to happen here. This is important to all of us, that this is good quality instruction and that this becomes a successful program. Okay, so that's what it looks like on the website version. Are there any questions about the FIDS day? Yeah.
So when they have this day, are these review concepts? They're not getting a new topic of it?
Amy, you want to talk about what those look like? Because you've actually spent the most time with them. Come on up. Amy's our Director of Elementary Education, and she has worked really hard with our curriculum leaders to make these, like I said, good valuable lessons. But lessons that aren't going to be overly difficult for the students to be guided upon themselves, or for the parents, or even the siblings to help guide them through it.
So the lessons for elementary are things that the children are familiar with doing, but that can stand alone are just good instruction that don't require us to know in advance exactly what day we are on the chapter. Let's take math, for example. We don't know necessarily when a FID will be called. So we need to have something that is good quality instruction and material for them to practice, but doesn't require some new instruction that parents may not know what to do with that particular concept, because it might look a little different than what they're used to seeing. So we need things that can stand alone and can be done with some guidance. Obviously, the younger children are going to need some guidance to know, this is the page this is talking about, or to do this, or maybe to log into websites. But it is going to be things that are familiar enough that they can kind of stand alone and be done on whatever day a FID would be called. Did I answer your question?
Also, elementary question. Just like, I know we have three days, and I appreciate that, Amy. How long are these lessons that they're working on? What does that day look like if you're recording?
Good question. So we want them to approximate a regular school day. The thing that happens during a regular school day is there's a lot of transitioning. There's a lot of waiting for other people to do things and for things to happen in a classroom that don't need to happen when you're doing instruction by yourself. So it's, it will not take the full time of a school day, but the instruction and the practice part should come close to approximating a regular school day. So let's say an elementary student is going to a house where there are going to be a number of children. Now, let's say one of the neighbors is taking eight of the kids, and they're going to be together so that parents can go to work. So maybe that's not the most conducive environment to that kind of time. That's why we want to allow those three days, so that families have enough time to figure out what way works best to get that work done. But it's not necessarily a one-to-one hour correspondence. It's more about the value of the instruction, if that makes sense.
So on a day like that, where there's eight kids at the neighbor's house, are all of those kids marking, "I am attending"?
I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so too.
You're not even, they really know intention of doing anything about that, because you have the three days.
Yes.
Correct, correct. Yes, the goal is to make this easy enough that families can get it done, but not so easy that it isn't quality learning for the day, because it does count as a school day. So we're accountable and responsible, providing quality instruction. But we also want to be responsible to our families and not make it so difficult that the kids can't access and engage in what they need to do. So there's a balance.
Just adding on to my question. So is there lessons that is about returning days, like, do you even know if that is a special? And also quality instruction.
It will vary depending on the child and depending on the content area and all of those things. So an ELA lesson in kindergarten is all morning long. So we're not going to have all morning long of ELA. The example that was shown, there's a listening to a story part, there's a practicing a sight word part. So we tried to hit all of the important parts of instruction without trying to replicate two and a half hours of instruction. Correct, correct.
You said before that you may choose, if there's a cancellation, it might just be a canceled day, or it might be a FID day. How do you make that distinction?
I don't know yet. But as I said this a little bit earlier, so my goal is to get us to school safely. That's goal one. Okay, we can't get here safely on time, then let's delay. All right, we can't get here safely even with a delay. Let's cancel. Now that we've canceled, what do we want to do? Do we want to initiate a flexible instructional day, or do we want to make this up on the future days? And so that's sort of where the decision-making is going to come in. I'd like to try this out. So here's kind of what we did with the process. This flexible instructional idea, flexible instructional day idea, happened in the state of Pennsylvania several years ago. Several schools got in. They closed the window. Nobody else could get in. And I've heard a lot of really positive things from the school districts who offered the flexible instructional day. So we were kind of waiting for our opportunity. That opportunity happened this summer. The window opened. It was a very short window. So I said, "Let's take a shot at this. Let's write up a proposal that we would do in the North Hill School District to make this happen and see if we get approved." We got approved. So now we've taken the last couple of months to build this. And so I'd like to use it and see what it looks like. And if it's not good quality instruction, then I don't know how often I'm going to use them. And so that's sort of where it is. So the first one is the test shot. Let's see what we do as far as attendance is concerned. Let's see if those lessons are way too time-consuming. These kids cannot do it this way. We've got to go back to the drawing board. And this is not the end-all, be-all, hey, this is the way it's going to be, take it or leave it. The state of Pennsylvania approved our idea, and a lot of this are the pieces of those ideas. But they didn't approve the specific individual content. They didn't approve what first grade math looked like on a flexible instructional day. That was up to us to build. And so that's sort of where the first one's going to be a little bit of a test. And so maybe that we use one this year and realize that there's a lot of work that we need to do with this yet. There's so many questions that we didn't have answered going into this, which I think we've done a nice job talking to the teachers who have built these lessons and working with the administrators who have built this site, that I think we've got a pretty good one going, but let's test it. And if it crashes on us, we may not have another one this year, but that just means that we've got to get back to work and make it something that we can utilize as something that is quality. So we are approved for a three-year window with this idea. And so I really hope that it is successful, and I really hope that it works, and then that this is a way that we can handle the unfortunate weather that we get in the city of Pittsburgh. But if it's not, we have five days built into our calendar that we can cancel and make up at a later time. So that's sort of the thought process. There's not a, hey, if I do this, we do this type thing. The one thing I can tell you that I probably wouldn't do is, and I know in the past, we've got those stretches of like bad weather, negative 20 degrees. On those days that we know we can't come, if we have multiple days in a row, I'm probably not going to go FID one, two, three in three straight days. I just don't think that that's a good use of time for any of us. And so it really depends upon what happened weather-wise, how successful is the first one, and then kind of what that looks like moving forward. It gives us a great opportunity. If we really do have bad weather, which we've had that in the past, where we were looking at that sixth day, and what do we do? And we're going to have to come to school after commencement. What do we do with the seniors? Like we've been in that case. But now this gives us a little bit more wiggle room. I mean, if we had 10 days we had to take off, we got crushed this winter. So that's sort of how I'm looking at it. Yeah, it's okay.
So you were saying that a couple of your districts, we have used some of the, can we share with, are there some of the pitfalls and disadvantages?
Yep, so when we did the application, we used Elizabeth Forward and Seneca Valley's information. We spoke to the administrators in both of those districts as we built our program and talked a lot about what they felt worked and what didn't work. It's where we, it's where we came up with the three-day idea. Some have more and some have less. And so that was one of the things. That's where we came up with the, "Let's move to Google Classroom" or iTunes U idea, rather than the full paper version. So that's, we've shared a lot of things with them. And as I said, those districts are having success to the point where they reapplied and were re-approved. Okay.
How do you evaluate how successful this test around the first day?
Yeah, good question. So I do have to do a report to the state at the end of the year. And that report is going to, is required, not only what our attendance rate was that day, but feedback from students, from parents, and from teachers. And so that's how that evaluation will be done. We're going to, we'll probably do like a Survey Monkey or, you know, a Google Form survey type thing. Probably not Survey Monkey. We cut that subscription, didn't we? We'll probably do a Google Form.
I have a question. Over here. So when we, when parents need help on these days, we're supposed to email their, the teachers.
Yes.
Do we have an update on making that easier for parents? Because I know some, there was some frustration with the submit a form.
So that, now we're talking about web security. So our system is hacked, and Chris might be able to give you the number, thousands of times a day. And it does it through email. So in order to protect our information and our system, we had to go with the submit a form way. Most parents at this time know how to communicate and email their teacher. I believe, Amy, we're putting the teacher email addresses in the bag. Did we decide whether we were going to do that or not do that? They're in the directory that's online. That's why Heather's scratching her head, because she showed me that today. So there's a directory online when you log into the FID site, that if you put the teacher's name in there, it'll take you to their email address. Because you might need to ask the art teacher that question and not necessarily the classroom teacher. And so that will help you, that will assist you to do it, that there's a directory link right on that FID's webpage. Last one. I'm just kidding. Go ahead. We'll be here all night. It's okay.
No, she took me in another direction. So I had the issue with the form and emailing the teacher. And it went to, they're talking now, so they didn't get it through no more. Is there a way to ensure that that's going to happen?
They do check. If it goes to the spam filter, we have a spam filter system. We will ask teachers, particularly, we do all the time now, but particularly on FID days, to make sure to check in their spam filter. That occurs twice during the day. Once early in the morning, you'll receive the names. And it doesn't occur till late in the evening. But that is updated. So that's certainly something we recommend to teachers. Make sure you check through that. We do that daily now. People will email us from work. It will hit our spam filter. So we're kind of trained in doing that, but we can certainly make that more mindful for teachers. That's the point.
Yeah, it's not something that will prevent it from going to spam, but as she said, they'll be instructed to just be cognizant of that.
What the topic is, so we know it's like FID, so we can, like.
And also, if your teacher was using through line, or through, there are other ways that you can try to let them know you sent them an email.
I was going to say too, I don't know if this is on.
Yeah.
I was going to say too, that that email address that comes from the form has been whitelisted by our system, so it shouldn't go to spam. But of course, we can remind them to check spam.
Well, in my situation, I didn't use the form. I ended up just getting the teacher's email address and sent it directly, and that's, I think, why it went to spam.
Right. I mean, I know the form is annoying. I mean, it is. But just having those readable email addresses on the website, those bots or whatever can just surf the site and pull them all up. And they just spam us all day long. Our IT director, since we changed it, we significantly dropped the amount of attacks on our email. And I mean, it's just unfortunately the way of the world, you know? And the other thing I was going to say, you can also contact your teacher directly through Power School. And actually, that's the easiest way. If you can, you know, you click it, you see their email address, so then you can read it and know it and save it in your phone or your address book.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We have no items under Athletics and Activities this evening. And under AW Beatty Career Center, I would like to announce the Students of the Month for October and November. Marissa White, Advertising Design. Richard McAllister, Automotive Collision Technology. Autumn Adamiak, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Carpentry, Building Construction. Nicholas Swab, Computer System Technology. Sabrina Tutzil, Cosmetology. Gracie Gary, Cosmetology. And Julie Adink, Sports Medicine and Rehab Therapy. Congratulations. Next up, we have Personnel, and I'll hand that over to Mrs. Spade.
Personnel items are discussed in executive session. Therefore, the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve personnel items one through three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Reed, would you like to take Community and Intergovernmental Relations?
Sure. Okay, that the board approved the agreement with Optimum Performance by Design LLC to facilitate school board retreat session per the attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Ms. Cozera, I know you just got appointed to legislative about an hour ago, but did you have any updates that you'd like to report?
I don't at this time, but I will prepare one for the next meeting.
No problem. Next up is Policy, and I'm also going to call on Ms. Cozera for that.
Yeah, we have the first reading of a board, School Board Social Media and Electronic Communication Policy. Just as a reminder, we go through two readings of any policy updates or new policies. This is basically, this policy basically mirrors what we have in place for. for our staff and teachers, protecting the school by saying that any of the school board members can post on their social media sites, and it doesn't bind the Board to act, or the district to act. So, I move that Policy Item 1 be added to the January 2nd, 2020 Committee Meeting with action agenda for second reading and approval.
Second.
Second to that motion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have Finance, and I will ask Dr. Knowlesch to handle that.
Thank you. This month, we have six items. Four of them are the standard pay-the-bills items. So I'll go through those quickly, and then I have a couple more we'll spend a little more time on. The first is the General Fund Bills, which is our normal monthly spending. The second are the Capital Project Fund Bills, and most of those have to do with work that's being done in the middle school in preparation for the 6th grade moving. There's also a little bit of work being done at Westview. The third is the Budget Transfers for the Month. And the fourth is Payroll for the Month of November 2019. Next, number five, is Resolution 2019-17, and that is authorizing participation, participation in an appointment of representatives to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Program. And what that does is, by participating with the AIU, basically, we say money, because they have a joint purchasing board for cooperative purchasing of various supply items. Because we're doing it through the IU, we can get better prices on a number of things. And in order to participate, we need to pass that resolution. And our representatives to that are Jerry Moos, and our Director of Finance and Operations, as of in a few weeks, and alternate representative is Kevin Swindell, who's our Director of Facilities. So those, that's what's going on with 2019-17. 2019-18 has the kind of awkward title of Limiting Authority to Increase the Real Estate Tax Rate for 2020 to 2021. And I want to give you a little bit of background about that. The first thing I want to say is, don't anybody panic. We're not saying we're gonna increase taxes. That's not what this resolution says. What happens is that the state sets the Act 1 Index each year. And it's meant to be the maximum amount that if a school district decides to raise taxes, there's a cap, there's a maximum of which they can raise. So for 2020 to 2021, the Act 1 Index is 2.6%. So a district can have a zero tax increase, or they can increase it anywhere up and to, and including the 2.6%, and still be within the index. But, being the state, they, it's not quite so simple. They have a second step, which is that they also have a process whereby districts can request an exception. And the reason they did that is there's certain, a list of certain financial situations where districts have circumstances that they may need to request an increase. One example is if there's an increase in your required pension contribution. Not that you've added payroll, but if the state says to you the amount that you have to increase is required. Well, that's true pretty much for every district in Pennsylvania. But, each district gets to decide on its own, about six months before its budget, whether or not it's gonna ask for an exception. So that's why it's coming up this evening. We're just at the very beginning of the budget process, but we need to tell the state, are we interested in an exception? And our answer to that is no. So, we have not sought any exceptions in well over six or seven years since I've joined the Board. Every year, we have stayed within or below the index. And so what this resolution is doing is the same thing. It's recommending that we continue that practice, that we waive our right to seek an exception from the state, and that we work within the index, so that if we have to ask for a tax increase, it's gonna be no more than what the maximum index is. And I think those of you that have been here before and heard me speak about taxes know that our approach to budgeting is to start with the goal of trying to have a zero tax increase. And that's, you know, what I'm recommending we do again this year, that we try for zero. I don't know if we can get there. We've got expenses like we do every year, it's gonna be really challenging. We're gonna be in the second year of bringing the middle school on. We're gonna be, you know, as always, pension requirements go up, charter schools go up, all of those things. But we don't know the answer to that yet. We're at the very beginning of that process. So we can't make a commitment, one way or the other, of if there's gonna be a tax increase, and how much it's gonna be. But we can, what we can say is that we'll be absolutely no more than the cap of 2.6. And that's what this resolution, resolution is doing for us. So, so we're gonna go ahead and recommend this resolution, which is waiving our right to ask for an exception, and recommend that we approve, we adopt this. So, with that, that is all of the items that are on Finance tonight. And the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the Board approve Finance Items 1 through 6.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're welcome. Any questions? We'll, we'll be talking a lot more about budgets, so we can, we can bring those up. I'm sure there'll be more coming along over the next couple of months.
Okay. Next up is Support Services, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Spade to handle that.
We have four articles here. The first one is a bid award carpeting replacement at the middle school. Description that the Board awarded the bid for carpeting replacement at the middle school to degallo carpeting in the amount of $47,570, yeah, $570, 6. Okay, second one? Second one is, I have to find it on here. For the Board to approve Florida Consulting LLC to provide design and contraction administration services for the warehouse roof replacement and major maintenance of the administration building, roof and the maintenance garage building roof. Also, to coordinate potential HVAC work for the warehouse building and the maintenance garage building. Third, that the Board approved Florida Consulting LLC to provide design and construction administration services for selected roof replacement of the middle school roof per the attached proposal. Okay, fourth, that the Board approved change order G701-002 for the high school roof project per the attached. The Superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the Board approve Support Services Items 1 through 4.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I believe Dr. Matarino has something he'd like to say.
Since we just completed Finance and Support Services, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Dave Hall on his upcoming retirement, and to thank him for everything that he has done for the North Hill School District. Dave was hired in January of 1991, and at that time, the district was on the verge of bankruptcy. We didn't have enough money to pay our bills, and we could barely meet the payroll. Dave immediately went to work to identify the problems and initiated drastic financial policies and procedures to move this district forward. Throughout the last 29 years, Dave has been the financial mastermind who has brought this district from near bankruptcy in 1991 to today, where we have a healthy fund balance. We have set money aside to help the pension increases, and we are in a position to have our long-term debt paid off in approximately 10 years. Through Dave's leadership, the North Hill School District is in a very healthy financial state, especially as compared to other school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. On a personal note, I want to thank Dave for his guidance. When I became Superintendent nearly eight years ago, he said that budget and finance was the biggest part of my position, and his leadership of this district was a huge help to me, and is important, is an important part of my successes as Superintendent. Dave has been a valuable member of our administrative team, and I'm so very appreciative for all that he has done. Dave, I wish you many years of health and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations, Dave.
Thanks.
It looks like we have one public, one person who signed up for public comment, Mr. Jim Barr. If you want to head over to the podium, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Jim Barr. I'm a resident of Westview Borough. And tonight, I wanted to find out if there is any posting of the school board meetings that are not, that are non-electronic. How do the people of North Hill School District find out about the board meetings other than, you know, being exposed to, you know, electromagnetic frequency AFX? So that was-
We, we do, Mr. Barr, we publish in the Post-Gazette the, annually, the school board meetings. After, this evening, we approved the 2020 meetings, and they will be published in the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette in the coming weeks.
Okay. For your information, I understand that probably the PG is the only newspaper that can put it out in hard copy. And they would not let me know if the school board had contracted with them to advertise the meetings. They wouldn't tell me that information. They said I have to go to them. So I just wanted the Board to know that. I mean, it's surprising they wouldn't tell me that information. The other, that's, real quick, the, I was concerned about when that, the budget talks are gonna start, and whether, what the mileage rate will be. In particular, I want to remind the board members that three out of the four, four board members, I believe, voted for the rate increase, or not re-elected to the Board. And I also want to, lastly, very briefly, let the board members know, because they took the oath of office tonight. And what they, I believe that this mileage, and I know it's not, tonight's not the night to do that, but I, you know this, because you took the oath tonight, you know about this stuff. It says, under Article 3B Education, Section 14, "The General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance and support of a thorough and efficient system of public education to serve the needs of the Commonwealth." So I'm sure this has been brought up to you before, but I just wanted to remind you of those few items. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barr. Before I adjourn, I just wanted to mention that we did hold an executive session to discuss legal and personnel issues prior to our reorganization meeting this evening. And with that said, I adjourn the meeting.